Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a meeting of the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the Board are open to the public and media consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star-Ledger, Express Times, and the Hundred and County Democrat, and sent to the clerks of Delaware Township, East Danwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard as shown on the agenda. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Here.
Dr. Charney?
Here.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Here.
Mr. Nickel?
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Mr. Richard?
Here.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Here. Praise for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Richard, would you like to read our district mission statement?
I would be honored to do that. Hundred and Central is an innovative educational community dedicated to the intellectual, social, and emotional safety and growth of all students. While fostering curiosity and promoting wellness, we aspire to create powerful learning experiences, establish strong partnerships, and serve as contributing members of society.
Thank you, Mr. Richard. Can I have a motion to approve the September 19 minutes?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Obey.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
While yes, motion carries.
Thank you. We have one item of correspondence noted in Board Docs, and then we'll move on to the Student Council Report.
So I want to welcome Elena, and Kelly, and Laurel are all here to give you two separate reports. So Elena's going to come up and give us our happenings. Thank you for coming tonight, Elena.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Elena.
Hi, everyone. My name's Elena. It's okay if you pronounce it wrong. Everyone does. So here's our Student Council Report, and a lot happened in the month of October. So first, we had the homecoming game. So Central won the football game, which is really, really good. It was against Franklin, and this game was also the Pink Out game. So the proceeds from the week will benefit the Breast Cancer Research Foundation and the American Cancer Society. Our homecoming court was also announced during the game. During halftime, members included Riley Donnelly, Daniel Kellogg, Mac Malley, Brandon Michaels, Henry Wilkinson, Lindsay Brewster, Laurel Henrichan, who's sitting over there, Cameron Kennedy, and I'm really sorry, I'm going to butcher some of these names, Fallon Siskvish, and Reina Tyler. All of these students are a great representation of the Hundred and Central community. So after the game, we also had the homecoming dance. We had over 500 students in attendance, myself included, and show-off productions provided the music, and all had a great time. The theme was pretty and pink to go along with the homecoming game. So for the week leading up to the football game, it was Spirit Week, and Monday was Pyjama Day, Tuesday was Adam Sandler Day, Wednesday, everyone wore their class colors, Thursday was Anything But a Backpack Day, and Friday was Pink Out. And freshmen won Spirit Week. We also had a pep rally on Wednesday, October 12th. Ms. Kopec emceed and provided the crowd with many great laughs. We saw performances from various Hundred and Central clubs, including the Marching Red Devils, Hundred and Central Dance Team, and Hundred and Central Cheer. We also incorporated some competition into the pep rally with some relay races and tug of war. The seniors won the games at the pep rally. Also, students bought raffle tickets to win a chance to pie their administrator. So we finished the day with each Mr. Estrada, Mr. Cohen, Mr. Brandt, and Ms. Long receiving a pie to the face. We also had the PSATs on the morning of October 12th, so that was for the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. The seniors had a guest speaker, Kevin Atlas, who helped them understand their motivation and leadership potential. We also had an activity fair on Friday, October 14th, during unit lunch, to showcase all of the different clubs that we have here on campus. We officially have over 100 activities for students to participate in. So some other things, looking ahead, the Thespian Society is hosting a speakeasy night on November 4th, and also the Move Alpha Theta Math Under Society is currently selling cheesecakes and other goodies, and the sale will be ending November 7th. Also, Varsity Cheer had an event called Cheer for the Cure on Saturday. We have a lot of updates from sports as well. This is the Varsity Boys Soccer Team defeated Newton 3 to 1 this weekend to win the Hundred and slash Warren slash Sussex Championship. Varsity Girls Soccer defeated Sparta 1 to 0 this weekend to win the HWS Championship. Varsity Football defeated Perth Amboy 27 to 7 on Friday evening. Varsity Gymnastics are the Skyland Conference champs. Girls Tennis won the HWS match. Varsity Girls Cross Country won the HWS Championship. Varsity Boys Cross Country took second at the HWS Championship. And then also, earlier this month, the Marching Red Devils performed at the Ludwig Musser Classic, which was held at MetLife Stadium. Out of the 45 bands competing in the A classification, the MRD placed 18th overall. In addition, the MRD was awarded the Best Overall Percussion Caption Award. So yes, I think that's all we have for this month. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Fantastic. And Mrs. Kellogg, you have the teams on those two teams, the two soccer teams?
Reagan Schubach for the girls, and Nick Rigga for the boys.
Incredible, incredible accomplishments this month. It's been wonderful to see the campus so busy and this is kind of live. You have the wrap-up for our state. They're just on the celebration today. It's just fantastic. Your, your, your. Sorry, sorry. So I'll invite now Laurel Henrichan and Kelly Rice are here to talk about the work that they've been doing with the design of our student representation to the Board. And, oh, we have, go ahead and introduce yourselves, guys. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Laurel. I'm a senior here.
Hi, I'm Kelly. I'm a junior.
Hi, I'm Swetha. I'm a sophomore.
This past Wednesday, Dr. Moore, Ms. Hughes, Mr. Brandt, Mr. Cohen, the Student Council Advisor, Ms. G, and us three students met to discuss how to best link student representation with the Board of Education.
The biggest task at hand is how to make it clear to students the importance of their feedback. They need to know who they're going to send it to, why, and some other questions include how or when.
The next step we took was to identify the growing diversity of communities here on our school campus. Through this, we emphasized the many different backgrounds and identities we all associate ourselves with.
We realized that we would not be able to have a representative of every identity or background on the actual representation team itself. We will need to ensure that the team can surface feedback and thoughts from every corner of experiences here on campus. The effort will be successful if every student knows why, when, and how to share feedback from the point of view of any of the backgrounds and identities in which they live, whether or not they are actually on the representative team.
Here are the five main organizations, oh, sorry, opportunities we have pinpointed to focus on. First one was to make asking for feedback a priority and a sort of habit. We have to continue to broaden our diversity on the Student Council. We have to rethink how the structure and body of our Student Council operates. We have to come up with new ways to provide the Board of Education with information regarding student life, and we have to ensure that student government reaches the CARE policies vision of our student leadership over our anti-bias and anti-racism efforts.
Our next step is to brainstorm specific strategies on how to achieve these five opportunities and figure out how students can work together with the school and the Board of Education in this process.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Important, important work that they're doing there. Thank you all.
And Laurel, congratulations on being nominated to homecoming court.
Yeah.
Ready to move into superintendent report?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. And thank you, Elena, and Kelly, and Swetha, and Ms. Ranson is here representing the advisors for Student Council. Some really important conversations, but again, I want to stress how important, because my microphone was off, how important this past month has been for the school with Spirit Week garnering as much participation as it did. It's just a wonderful time here in school. And then to win the game on top of it is something else. So it's been feeling good around here. Today marks the end of the celebration of Diwali. It's an incredibly important holiday in the Hindu, Jain, and Sikh faiths, and some Buddhists also celebrate Diwali. It's a festival that marks the triumph of good over evil, and light over darkness, wisdom over ignorance, all of those very important kinds of victories. I was greeted very recently with best wishes for a happy and prosperous Diwali season, so I offer that to all who are observing the holiday today. The mission, the mission that Mr. Richard read, Mrs. Hughes read it at our last meeting, has me thinking about just the need to share a little bit of a mission moment whenever we come to this table. So one of you will read the mission, and I'll find a little moment to share with you. Not an enormous moment, and this one's pretty good, but it's not enormous. I want to speak tonight about Mr. Jesse Spencer, who's our supervisor of athletics. At a recent football game, and I'm not going to say which one, the opposing team began chanting insults across the field at our students as everybody was gathering for the game. It was distressing. Our students were stunned by this. Mr. Spencer sprinted across the field. He reprimanded the students and spoke to an adult who was with them, and warned them that they were not going to be allowed to stay if that didn't cease immediately, and that we were not going to tolerate that kind of behavior here at Central. He stood up. He stood up for our school. He stood up for our community and for our students. But it was the next thing that he did that has been sticking with me as a mission moment for us to think about tonight. And it goes in line with all of the modeling and mentorship and all of the things that we've been talking about over the past few months. Some people who were there were urging our students to shout back at our visitors. Mr. Spencer sprinted back to the home side from across the field, went up into the stands, took our students' attention with a commanding voice. I'd never heard his voice so loud, and I was all the way across the home stands. He didn't even have a megaphone of any kind, if I remember correctly. I want to imagine that he didn't, even if he did. And reminded, he reminded our students that they were there to support their peers on the field, to cheer on our students, and that it would be a mistake. It would be a mistake, it would be bad behavior to answer their calls with even more bad behavior. Stand above was his message. Stand above. And I appreciated that as a moment to highlight not just the kind of upstanding that we are asking everybody to do in this difficult time, but also for that moment of modeling and mentorship that he provided. So tonight, I offer thanks to Mr. Jesse Spencer for that moment at one of our recent games. Now, we have a few other things to talk about tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Cangelosie-Hayde in a moment to talk about the first round of, well, actually, second. She reported last month on the first round of scores, or August or September on our AccessWida scores, but she's going to talk tonight about our NJSLA scores. We've had a lot of conversations here, and we're going to have a lot more in the days ahead about where our students are on point, you know, where they're barreling ahead, where they might be behind, and where they might even be suffering as a result of the past couple of years. So tonight is another example of that kind of conversation, trying to place our students on a continuum of where they are against where they ought to be in the best judgments that we can offer. Today, there was a lot of national news, past couple of days, about NAEP scores. The NAEP is the National Assessment of Education Progress, Educational Progress. Schools are selected on a sort of rotating basis to take that test, elements of which occur just about every year. They do some grades each year, so it's sort of a staggered schedule. I don't know the last time that Hundred and Central participated in that test. It was well before my time. But the scores released in the most recent round show a decline in achievement from the 2022 group that took them last year compared to the last time they were taken in 2020, focusing on fourth and eighth graders in reading and math. So that's what you're seeing in the news, if you're seeing this in the news. It's about fourth and eighth graders in reading and math, and the slip that's occurred there comparing those two groups of students in 2022 and 2020. It's not the same students multiple times, it's two different groups of students. We won't see any meaningful NAEP reports on older students, 12th graders, 17-year-olds, they have a couple of different categories that they look at, for at least another year or two, unless they surprise us with a long-term trend report on 17-year-olds or something like that. But there's nothing, nothing on their schedule. All that said, we do the same analysis on state tests here, and Jessica will talk about that tonight, comparing the current results that we have for our most recent tests to the previous group, comparing them to the previous group that took the tests. Jessica's going to be looking at specifically tonight, sharing specifically tonight, the NJSLA exam that was completed by ninth graders last year at the end of Algebra I, English I, Algebra II, and Geometry. And there was also a science test that our 11th graders took, NJSLA. Both the tests and the populations who took them changed very dramatically between the two years, so it's hard to do comparisons from 2018, 19 to 2021, 22. There were no tests in between. So we're going to do the best we can to do some comparison between those two administrations. And remember, for math and English Language Arts, it's just ninth graders. We're just talking about ninth graders. We're not talking about other students who in prior years had taken those tests. And not even all ninth graders. In math, students who took Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry in middle school took the test there in seventh or eighth grade. So our most accelerated students in math took the test before they even got here as students, so we don't get those scores to report to you. It's another piece to remember. It's a regional high school district phenomenon that we see across the state. So again, a little bit of apples to oranges in comparisons that she'll do, but she's going to, she's going to give you a sense of what our analysis has looked like. And then there's NJGPA testing, which we also took last year. She'll talk about that next month. Our scores actually went up, according to those, but the background behind those tests is also very confusing, long confusing history to those tests, so we're going to work on that analysis and bring it to you next, next time. So given what I'm hearing from my colleagues, given what I'm seeing tonight, what you'll see tonight from Jessica, I'm quite pleased by our performance on the few state exams that we have yet to report to you. We see some declines, and we'll show you those, and we're breaking those out by different demographic groups. But at Central, we're good at catching kids up. We're working very hard to take what we can from the very limited data that we get from these state exams and zero in on the specific gaps that really matter to kids. We're using our own testing program too, Linkit and PSAT. We expanded PSAT considerably this year to fill in even more information. And as we continue all of this, we'll share all of that with you. Tonight, it's just NJSLA, but as we move forward, we're going to be putting all of this together for you so that you can see how it all compares. I'll be most interested to see, for example, how the Start Strong assessments and the PSAT compare to the state assessments, but that's the kind of stuff that I get excited about. Now, in all of this, we've, we've said, and I think shown again and again, that we also have to catch up on our kids' wellness, their engagement in powerful learning, their ability to contribute to the partnerships that will help them each claim a maximum level of belonging and comfort here in our community. We don't get progress on those things, which are also necessary by mindlessly accelerating our academics without any regard to student social and emotional needs. So when I talk about targeting our academic work, that's what I mean. We have to make work, we have to make room, ample room for all of this other work. Among any of the sort of learning loss that you're hearing about, there's also, and we've talked about it, a profound loss of empathy across all age groups, youth and adults alike. I was just watching before I arrived here tonight, saw on the news photos of people in Los Angeles standing on an overpass and delivering what looked like the Nazi salute and saying, with a banner proclaiming that Kanye West was right about the Jews. You know, so there's a loss of empathy. There's something, something that we have to address. We've heard from members of the community here. They've shared that 2021 marked a record number of bias incidents among youth and adults in New Jersey. So there's work there that we have to do. On the other hand, we've also heard here and in the election at this microphone, in whatever room we've met in as a board, we've heard schools must stay away from these quote "social issues," end quote. We've heard that. And schools have to focus just on academics. There's a notion that a school that regards the whole child with eyes toward wellness, toward belonging, toward empathy, toward equity, that when we regard a whole child in that way, that we've somehow strayed from some proper and exclusive focus on academics, that we're doing something wrong. I've shared, and I'll share again, that notion has been false forever, for the entire history of public schools, not just in America, but across the world. You know, as I shared last time, you'll discover here in America, in the declarations of all political parties, you'll find, going back to our founding, you'll find the assertion from liberals and conservatives alike, you'll find the assertion that public school must hold up our free and democratic republic, and that to do it, it has to forge into difficult topics, it has to do difficult work, it has to think about and talk about difficult things so that adults of tomorrow will be able to wrestle with the opportunities and challenges of tomorrow. You can't hide from those things. These are social, they're interpersonal, they're economic things. They're not just academic things, solve-for-X kinds of things that these tests kind of get at discreetly and that we use as measurements sometimes to make broad generalizations about how countries compare to each other from just these, these very simple tests. We know, we all know that it's a lot more complicated than that. It's more complicated than just teaching stuff in subjects. In fact, I believe, and I think we've talked about here in years past, the more we jam down students' throats, the more likely that we're inviting them into anxiety and stress than we are into belonging and, and collaboration here in our community. We need to target all of the things, academic and social, very carefully to help everyone move forward. And in the current climate, this work to address the whole child has been called indoctrination. It's been called a lot of things, but just know that without the openness to individual differences, without the efforts to close gaps for those who need those efforts the most, without the efforts to improve behavior and help each student toward comfort and belonging, whether you like the pronouns they use or not, without those efforts, society stays put. Nothing moves forward, including those test scores. Educators are trained, they're licensed to do this work. They always have been. Whole profession is based on it, always has been. We have the best educators here. I've gone into crisis again and again with them, and my chief lesson coming out of each of those crises has been that I am so fortunate to stand with them in crisis again and again. We've always done tough work here, and we're going to continue to do it. That puts me in the role of having to fight for things sometimes. And tonight, most recently, I have to talk quickly about fighting to keep our school-based youth services programs standing in the interest of our students' wellness, in the interest of their growth and recovery. Through this program funded in part through a grant, no, funded entirely, actually, through a grant from the state, we host four therapists from Hundred and Behavioral Health. They work with hundreds of our students, hundreds of them. Two years ago, in the early months of the pandemic, the state tried to pull funding on those programs, and the outcry was so loud that the state actually turned around and put the funding back. I'd never seen that happen before, never. It's happening again, and the outcry is happening again, and I don't know what's going to happen next. The state is talking now about defunding those programs at the end of this school year, so those hundreds of students with those four therapists would, that program would disappear. It would cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars in our budget to replicate anything close to that program. Our students are really worried, and I need you to know, I've been meeting with my colleagues across the state and also with students and parents here at Central to talk about this and to let everybody know what's happening. Programs are set to close at the end of this school year, but I also need you to know that the ripples are already being felt now. Some of our therapists are already pursuing opportunities elsewhere. I can't blame them. I can't blame them. They were just told that the rug's been pulled out from underneath them. So I can't blame them for that. But it leaves students behind who now don't have the therapist. Caseloads, 30, 40 students per therapist in some cases. The state's conduct in all of this has been most disappointing. Officials have lied to us. They've refused to answer questions. They have not done their homework on the programs that they seek to cut. They paint them all with one broad brush and say none of them are impactful, but we know different. We know we have waiting lists. We know that these programs have saved kids' lives. So we're going to continue to fight. We'll continue to fight for those programs. The most important thing that people can do, that any of our students can do, is share their experiences with our school-based therapists here, anywhere they feel comfortable. Share the experiences. Let people know how important these programs are for your health, your growth, and your recovery from the pandemic, and let folks know that they are important programs that make a difference. All right, Jessica, I'm going to turn it over to you now. Where are you? Jessica's going to report on our NJSLA scores, as I mentioned. BOE members, you have a copy of this presentation in Board Docs. I also emailed you a PDF. So you can stay up here and view that copy on your screens, or if you want to sit in the audience to see it from there. Your choice, but as Jessica gets set up, if you want to reposition yourselves, be my guest. Is this, there you go.
Thank you. Okay, I think we can see it now, and you all can either see it, or I know you have it on your screen. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm here to present our New Jersey Student Learning Assessment results for the spring of 2022, and Dr. Moore gave a very nice introduction. So you, some of what you may hear may be repetitive of what he said, but it is important nonetheless for me to say it as I present the results to you. Before I go through each individual assessment result, I wanted to take the time to provide just a brief overview of the NJSLA. It has been some time since we last tested our students with the NJSLA, last time being the 2018, 2019 school year. And so the test actually looks a little bit different right now. So the NJSLA, formerly known as PARC Assessment, was designed to measure student proficiency in the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. This past year, we tested students in English Language Arts, grade nine only, as Dr. Moore noted, and math, grade nine only, with the exception of algebra. So it was grade nine, and the students taking Algebra I for the first time. And I do make note of that because it is important to note that traditionally, students who take Algebra I beyond grade, beyond grade nine may be in a more decelerated track, and you'll see that reflected in the results. The NJSLA results report out on five performance levels, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, and we are looking for fours and fives. So fours being that they met expectations, five being they exceeded expectations. So when I talk about proficiency, I'm talking about students who, percentage of students who scored in the four or five range. And I do think it's important to note that the change, there was a change in graduation requirements from the State Board of Education. So previously, the NJSLA, which we administered in multiple grades beyond grade nine, was the primary graduation assessment requirement. But starting last year, that was changed, and they changed the graduation assessment requirement to the NJGPA, which is the New Jersey Graduate which is the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, for 11th graders. So this was a big change in assessment. It actually, I was calling it the HSPA, the HSBA version 2.0, if you recall that. But it was a change in assessment. So it is important also to note, because students know that there was that change that occurred. Now, as we would have it, as the Department of Education looked at results, they decided to waive the NJGPA for the class of 2023 as an assessment requirement, although I know that does not affect the NJSLA results. I did think it was important to note that to you all. So we're going to start with English Language Arts. And something that I do want to point out is that we were a field test for English Language Arts, which means instead of two testing units, we actually had three testing units. We're not aware, we're not privy to which unit is a field test unit, but students do take two units on one day and one unit on another day, which is also important to note. So here is our performance level chart. I wanted to acclimate this to you. Now, every test will have a similar chart. Hundred and Central's in the light blue, and the state proficiency levels are in the dark blue. And so of course, it's important to have the highest proficiency we can have, but we also look at our comparison with the state. So when you look at levels four and five, you see we're sitting right under 70% proficiency. And this is good proficiency. You can see it compared to the state. I do want to note, this is still an 11% decrease from when we last tested, from our 2019 results. And I also wanted to make note that this is consistent with what we're seeing, not only on the state level, the decrease about 11, anywhere between 10% to 15%, but we're also seeing this in our district factor group results, the DFG results, as well as in the results around the county. So I did want to make note of that. It's just something that, you know, the result of COVID learning. I'm going to go now to comparison, and it is a difficult thing to compare 2019 to 2022. Obviously, things are much different. And this is also a different group of students who has been through a big change. But when we look at proficiencies, again, one through five, we put together averages, and we disaggregated them by student program and by student subgroup. So you can see in 2019, our average was a 4.1, and in 2022 is 3.7. And so you can see kind of going down that far-right column, the change there for the different student subgroups. And it's consistent for the most part. And so what we do with this is we just look for trends. What are we missing? There are some things to maybe take into celebration. So we did see an increase for our English Language Learner students, but on the other hand, their overall average is still lower. So while they had an increase, their overall average is lower. And that's just an example of one of the ways that we are using the data. I did also want to note that we do not report on groups that are less than 10 students. We're not allowed to do that for our student privacy sake. Now, Dr. Moore also mentioned Linkit. And so Linkit is, and you've heard me mention this probably before, it's an assessment and data dashboarding tool that we use in our district. For really, now we've expanded it to all departments, but we did start primarily with math and English Language Arts. And they have three assessments that are aligned to NJSLA, that are designed to give us information as to how students are progressing along the skills and standards tested at NJSLA. And so one of the things we've put together, and this is the team of our supervisors with me, is looking at what the correlation between the NJSLA results are and the Linkit results. So for English Language Arts, Linkit predicted was about 85% accurate. So it's close, but it wasn't totally dead on there. So we had actually 172 students placed in a higher band than Linkit had predicted, and 67 placed in a lower band. And I think that's just important to note that as well. I'm going to move on to math now, and I do want to make a note about math. Again, this is for Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. And so this is grade nine. So this gets a little tricky, because again, we're a regional high school district. So there's, you know, we're seeing students in year one. And you'll see there's a little bit of a story to tell as you compare results. And it will continue next month when you see our NJGPA, our 11th grade assessment results as well. So Algebra I, I would say this, in terms of results and proficiency levels, this was our lowest proficiency level here. So here's our performance summary. You see that we don't have any Level Fives. And then we have 31% proficiency in Level IV. So that's an overall proficiency of 31%. And it's less than the state, which is also disappointing for us. I do want to make note that, Dr. Moore, in a K-12 district, the students reporting on Algebra I are accelerated, there are some accelerated students who take Algebra I in seventh or eighth grade, and as well as the ninth grade students. We have the students in ninth grade, as well as those taking Algebra I for the first time. So it's hard to compare us to a K-12 district. It's really more pertinent to compare us to regional high school districts across the state. And again, they're seeing similar decreases. So we have 31% proficiency. This is down about 13% from our prior testing year. We were the same approximately in Levels 1 and 2. We had an increase in students in Level 3. And so what that shows me is that we kind of moved, we shortened that curve a little. We moved, like, students who would have typically been a Level 5, they maybe moved to 4, and 4 would have moved to Level 3. So we shortened that curve. In comparing those results to what we saw in Linkit, there was about a 92% overlap, a 92% prediction rate there. And I'm going to go to, again, the disaggregated results there. So our overall average was 3.1 in 2019, changed to a 2.9 in 2022. And then you can, again, see the change. And the changes are small, they're minimal, but they are there. And so again, we're looking for what sticks out. So immediately, you probably see what I see, that the ELL status, right, our English Language Learners, their score dropped on average by 1.1 points. And that's something we look at. That doesn't, it doesn't necessarily mean anything's wrong. It just means that we have to look at that. Also, our ELL population, as compared to the number of students who took this exam, is small. So one student is a higher percentage in terms of how it affects the average of those scores. I do want to note, and you'll see this as I move to our Algebra II results, that, again, this is our Algebra I. And so I believe what you'll see, although this is not apples-to-apples, is traditionally, Algebra II is a third-year math course. And as Dr. Moore mentioned, the NJGPA math results also show that we are actually able to catch students up by the third year that they're with us. So I'm going to pull up this proficiency and then explain that a little bit more. So for Algebra II, we have an overall proficiency of 73%. You can see that there. That's obviously a much better increase, a better proficiency rating than we saw in Algebra I. And again, it's not apples-to-apples to compare the Algebra I here to the Algebra II here, but it is a sign that we are able to catch students up as they progress to math. You'll see next month, when I present our New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment results, our Grade 11 Math Test, we had 65% proficiency in math. So that's consistent with this. So again, if we're starting students at a lower percentage in grade nine, by grade 11, they're at a 65% proficiency rate. And so going back to our Algebra II here, we had a very small decrease in our proficiency, and I'm very proud of this. So this time, we're about 73%. In 2019, we were at 76%. So not that great of a decrease. And amazingly, in 2018-2019, we had had an increase in proficiency of a whopping 36%. So there's been some really positive change, and it seems like COVID did not make us lose too much ground on that. I will say it is disappointing that we don't have a higher percentage of proficiency in Level 5. It's not a huge difference, but we always like, again, we try and outperform the state, of course. And when we look at Linkit, 96% of the students placed at the same band or higher in the Linkit assessments than they did, as they did, excuse me, on the Algebra II NJSLA. So this was a pretty good predictive measure. I'm going to go over to the, again, the broken down by student subgroups and student programs here. And you see that the changes are not as great. But one of the things we also look at, if you recall me speaking earlier, we cannot report on subgroups that are less than 10. So if you notice, there are differences in the amount of subgroups that I've reported. And that's something we're looking at, right? So we're saying, why are we missing? Why are we missing representation in Algebra II in the ninth grade level? And that's something we have to look at with our K-8 districts, because they're coming to us with this kind of already predetermined and pre-decided. So again, this is just one of the factors that we use when we're looking at our data. And then finally, for math, I'm going to go over to geometry. This is a small number of students. This is an accelerated group of students. But we have 100% proficiency, which is quite amazing. So 50%, we're Level 4, 50% we're Level 5. But I do want to note, this is an increase in 37% proficiency from the 2019 testing year. So although it's a small percentage of our ninth graders, it's still a big improvement. And I think that's quite remarkable in terms of COVID learning as well. And when we look at Linkit, again, that was about a 96% overlap in terms of the student scores. Again, when we disaggregate by student groups and student programs, you will see who's missing. And again, we're using this data when we articulate and when we look for opportunities to accelerate students. What are we missing, and how do we make sure that we're reaching all students, that we have proper representation up there?
Jess, before you go on to science-
Yes, sir.
I just want to-
Go back.
As we talk about math, we talk about English Language. So when you have English Language Arts and we're comparing Hundred and Central to the state of New Jersey, we're comparing Hundred and Central's ninth graders to other ninth graders across the state.
Yeah.
When you're looking at the math courses, we're comparing Hundred and Central's ninth graders, and in the case of Algebra I, the first-time Algebra I students, with all students K-12, who may have taken Algebra I, Algebra II, or Geometry in seventh or eighth grade.
Yes.
So those scores get reported by our middle schools, and we don't report those scores. But they are included in the comparison. So we're not just comparing to other regional high school districts.
Yes, thank you. So now, we will talk about our NJSLA and science. And I thought it was, we needed a little overview of the NJSLA and science because it is different from math and English Language Arts. So the NJSLA and science is rather new. Unlike the math and the ELA, which are either grade-level or course-specific, science content is grades 9 through 11. Prior to us moving to a Grade 11 Science Assessment, New Jersey had administered and end-of-course-examined biology. Now, this was never a graduation requirement in terms of passing it. Again, this assessment is new. So we did assess in 2018-2019. And it took so long for the state to determine cut scores that we didn't get our results back for a year or maybe a little more than a year after students took the exam. And the test was only a field test in 1718. So this is still a very new exam. It's very difficult to make comparisons. We also are unsure of what content exactly makes up science. They don't give us percentages in terms of all the science content in grades 9 through 11. What percentages make up the general science assessment? So our course curriculum and our sequence is different, although it is aligned to the state standards and the NGSS, the Next Generation Science Standards. We don't know if that's how the state has aligned their assessment. So our sequence is starting, students start in Environmental and Earth Science, then Biology, and then, in general, Chemistry, and then Physics. So that is different. Many high schools will do Biology first and then Chemistry and Physics, and they miss the Earth and Space Science standards, which are part of the NGSS and the state standards. We're also scored differently here in the NJSLA science. So there's actually only four performance levels, 1 through 4, as opposed to the 1 through 5 that we see for the NJSLA in Math and ELA. So here, again, we're looking for proficient or advanced proficient, which is 3 or 4. So I will now go over to our results. So we had over 650 students take this assessment. And you can see our results there, with an overall proficiency of just about 33%. And this is down. When we tested in 2019, our overall proficiency was about 44%. So again, similar to these others, we're seeing drops of about 10%. What is disappointing, when you look at this, is that our Level 4, although it's close to the state, is not above the state's level of proficiency. And I do want to point out, now, in math and ELA, I had been referencing Linkit data. Linkit data, Linkit itself does not have necessarily an NJSLA benchmark for science that students would take. And that's because it covers multiple grade levels. It'd be more difficult to administer. But we do have common assessments and benchmarks that our departments have administered and put into Linkit so that we could do comparative data. And I will say, the results that we have on that are stark contrast to what we're seeing here. So here, where we see 33% proficiency, it's very low, and it's disappointing when you see that out loud, that it's 33% proficiency. But when we look at our benchmark data, we had 89% proficiency. And so that is a huge difference. And it's just one example of showing you that we can't only use our NJSLA data. We have to use multiple sources of data. So just as I had done for the other assessments, I do want to go over the changes here for our student subgroups. So in 2019, our average was 2.3, in 2022, 2.2. So not a huge change. And again, just recall that this is 1 through 4, not 1 through 5. But looking at our student subgroups and seeing how that's disaggregated there. Not a huge change, although you do notice that females had a more of a decline than males. And that's just something interesting that we need to investigate further. So I do want to talk about our interventions. What do we do with this data? As you've heard me speak about, it is good practice to use multiple sources of data. So yes, we have our NJSLA, but that is not the only thing we're using. We're using our Linkit. We're using our Course Common Assessments. We're using Start Strong as we get those results. And we're also in math, we have something additional that we use called iXL. We're using all of this data to put it together, to identify students who may need assistance. Teachers meet regularly. Actually, our departments meet every Tuesday afternoon during Block 5 to go over various things, but one of their professional responsibilities is to review data. And so our supervisor team has done a really good job in leading the teachers through going through the data in Linkit, because Linkit contains not only our NJSLA data, but our Linkit data, our common benchmarks that we administer in Linkit, giving a whole picture, a more complete picture of a student rather than just one test score. And what they're doing when they're in there is they're not just looking at the overall proficiency level or the overall score, but they're looking for trends. So where, okay, we see that the average is a 3 out of 5, but where are we lower? So for example, in ELA, we noticed a drop in 20% proficiency in reading informational text. Everything else, in terms of subskills, dropped about 5%, but reading informational text dropped about 20%. That's something we have to look at. Why was there that drop 20%? Do we need to now incorporate more informational text into our curriculum? And the answer is yes. And so that's what the teachers do. They'll meet to regularly review that. And then through formative assessment, as well as the Linkit benchmarks, we'll see what is our progress on that. We also have, within the class, we have, we identify students who need interventions. Teachers are the first tier of intervention, right? Doing those curricular adjustments, helping students individually in class as needed. But for students who need more targeted support, we have something called RTI, which is Response to Intervention. And this happens during math and English Language Arts. We have teachers who, this is part of their, again, professional responsibilities. This is their teaching duty, where they either push into a class or pull a student out, depending on what the needs are and what the lesson or the skill is. And so those teachers are working with the students constantly, actually. There's always, there's data reports that they run. They're looking, they're in communication with the student's course teacher to see how they're progressing, and that's the work they're doing on a daily basis. If a student is successful with the interventions, they no longer stay in the RTI. It's only as needed until the student's able to catch up on a skill, or if they need it the whole year, they stay in it. the whole year, they stay in it the whole year. In math, again, we use something called iXL. It's a software that's online, and it allows students to hone in on specific skills. So when we look at our, again, when we look at our test data, we can see what standard or what skills students really need assistance with, and that's where we would put them, work with them through tutorials, and have them then reassess using iXL to see if they were successful on that particular skill. We also use Block Five Tutorial. One caveat there is that Block Five Tutorial is not mandatory. And sometimes, our most difficult-to-reach students cannot stay for Block Five. So that's something we have to grapple with and we have to look at. And then we also offer traditionally Spring Tutorials, although when I say Spring, we, every year, I think we push them earlier and earlier. So we typically start those in about February, and those are optional sessions where we, again, we have identified students who need intervention supports, and we offer them, and it's COVID forced us to actually offer them virtually and in evening hours, and that has worked out great. So we offer them in-person, virtually, we offer after-school and evening hours, just to try and accommodate different student schedules and different, you know, student modes of learning. And two other important interventions, if we could use that word, that departments are continuing to use this data. It's not as if we just have one meeting where we look at our test data, we call it a day, and that's it. This is a continual process. This is part of our curriculum revision and adjustment process, that we are continually looking at data to mitigate for those instructional and learning gaps, whether that's due to COVID learning, or if it's just due to student learning gaps that they had prior to COVID. So we're continuing to do that work. And then, as I mentioned earlier, a really critical part of our work, and what the tests are now revealing, is that we really need to work harder with our K-8 districts to articulate better in terms of our curriculum. What does it mean to be ready for Algebra I in ninth grade? What does that mean? Why do we only see certain subgroups accelerating and taking Geometry and Algebra II? So these are questions that we pose when we have our vertical articulation meetings. And then, finally, just looking ahead. So Dr. Moore mentioned this, but we really want to, we are interested in comparing all of our data together. So we are waiting for Start Strong results, which I think should be here soon. The testing window just closed. So comparing that, in particular, I'm interested to see our 11th grade science with our 12th grade science Start Strong, because those students only tested months apart, and I'm interested to see the comparison. We also expanded our PSAT, excuse me, administration to ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. We get those results in December, which is a little late, but it is in time, still for Spring Tutorials if needed, or for course placement decisions as well. Meanwhile, also going on in the background is the New Jersey Department of Education, their determination of the graduation assessment requirement. So we know that the new requirement is an 11th grade assessment. And for this year, we are administering the NJGPA, but I believe the proposed code says, "or an 11th grade assessment." So this is continuing to change, and the fluidity of it does make it a little difficult for us in terms of preparing for that. And again, we're just continuing to refine and adjust our interventions. So as I mentioned, Block Five Tutorial is a great time for students, but we're not reaching everybody. So is there a way to reach more students during the school day when they're here and we can get them, perhaps during lunch in some way? So that is our NJSLA information, and I will turn it back to Dr. Moore and all of you if there are any questions that I can answer.
I have two questions and one comment. First, a comment. Everyone needs to know that the science assessment is a paper tiger. There are no ramifications for students doing poorly, and therefore, no incentive to do well. Hello, hello?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. So as I said, the science assessment is a paper tiger. There's no ramifications for students, and therefore, no incentive to do well. And the data show this across the state. So I have a question related to that, and Jess, I don't know the answer to this, but to what degree is the science assessment aligned with the expectations of the state's standards?
I don't know. That's a question I would love to get the answer to, but we don't know. We don't, you know, with, at least with the NJSLA in Math and ELA, we know kind of percentages or rough percentages of what the subtopics and the subskills will be. But for science, we don't know what necessarily that is. And there's no sample assessment online like there are for ELA and math.
It's a shame.
Yes.
Can I share a point on that, too? Just the concern that we have, that Jess and I talk about often, is in a district like ours, where Dr. Hall, he's now Dr. Hall, by the way, Matt Hall is now Dr. Hall, has really pushed into new ground over the past few years in terms of aligning to the Next Generation Science Standards. Our concern is that the test is still aligned to a more old-fashioned layout of science instruction. And I think schools across the state that have pushed ahead, as Central has, are starting to share that observation.
That's exactly true. The other question I have, the other question I have of you, Jess, is what does our current vertical articulation with our sending districts look like, especially in math?
So we have, we have multiple kind of factors going into our vertical articulation. We have an overall principal and curriculum specialist articulation. Mr. Brant and I attend those, Dr. Moore attends those. So those are, all the administrators attend those three times a year, where we kind of set out goals for the year, but then each department has articulation as well. And I apologize, because I don't want to give the impression that they haven't been working on this. They have been, but a lot of times, what the discussions focus on is accelerating students or the students who are already performing well, how to make sure they're prepared for honors Algebra II when they get here. And we want to flip those conversations and go, we know those students will be prepared when we get here. We want to know, what does it mean to be prepared for Algebra I? And how do we work that backwards into the curriculum? You know, if this, we know they need these skills by ninth grade, how does that affect your eighth-grade curriculum, your seventh-grade curriculum, and so on?
Do you have any ideas for improving the effectiveness of the articulation process?
I, I don't know if it's a matter of more time, or if it's just investment. So one of the tensions that we have is that we have four different sending districts with four different sets of goals and four different sets of initiatives, and they don't always, not that, I mean, I'm sure everyone agrees, this is an important goal, but that's not necessarily everyone's focus, and that's not necessarily everyone's directive to take as they go to articulation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a few questions. So let me just say that, first of all, to Rob's point and Jeff's point, the company line from the state is that the science assessment is thematically NGSS. Few of us know, because we've never seen it. We're not allowed to see it.
Right.
But they say that it's problem-solving oriented, and it's not necessarily content-specific, but it's more integration of all the sciences. But again, it's top secret, so no one, most districts, to Jess's point, do poorly on the science assessment. They've always done it. I was on the first HSBA committee in the early 90s, and they did poorly on that. So it's just, to Rob's point, it's a low-stakes test, as is, by the way, NJSLA and in the state, well, it slipped my mind.
The GPA and the, yeah.
Yeah, well, the GPA has, has high stakes, because you have to pass it to graduate. But the, most of the state assessments are low stakes, so kids, and I'll be frank, they just take a dive, because they know it doesn't count. So the affect is very important, and they, if it's too difficult, if the problem's too difficult, they just won't do it. That's always been an area of concern with regard to the state assessments, so we can't take it with a grain of salt, but we have to weigh it appropriately. I'm pleased to see that we triangulate our data, that we have other sources. New Jersey Excel is very good. I've used that in other districts in math. Linkit, of course, is, as you say, highly correlative to a lot of the academic testing by the state. But, you know, I think what you'll say next month with Start Strong is the same, you know, movie that we've seen today. They just, I really would not urge that we pay a lot of attention to this. It's probably a dangerous statement, but I think our own internal testing is much more valid, and if we can track it, and as you say, we have data meeting teams that sound fairly regular, and that we can use that data to target what we need to do. So one of my questions is, what did we find in these assessments in terms of subtopics in algebra in particular that we need to look at? Is it substitution? Is it factorials? Is it expressions? Which areas do we need to look in?
So we have, in Algebra I, there were two areas where we dropped the most. So, and they don't even get that specific for us yet, but we have modeling and application as one of the areas, and then expressing mathematical reasoning. And actually, both of those make sense to me in terms of results of COVID, especially in math, the virtual learning was quite difficult, and so modeling, you know, trying, teachers on Zoom trying to model, it became much more difficult, and just the interactivity, the importance of the interactivity for students and teachers. So those were the two areas where we, I would say, had the larger drop than the other subareas. And then, in Algebra II, the drop was in major content, although not as much of a drop as we saw in the two areas in Algebra I. So major content, that also would make sense to me, that if the Algebra II teachers began teaching, and they did as we instructed them to do in terms of learning acceleration, to diagnose, and then do just-in-time instruction to make sure that students could handle those kind of next-level skills. So they were addressing those, and it's not learning loss, it's coverage loss, right? Because just the pacing was off. So that, both of those make sense to me in terms of COVID learning.
And then, a final question, comment, if I may. So we have a Block Five, and this is, as I understand it now, used voluntarily for tutorial. My experience is that doesn't work. You have 65% of your students that are in dire need in Algebra I. You can explore an incentive, positive incentive program. I'm talking about, you know, retake of tests, boosting your grade, but you got to work to do it. You have to attend, you know, you're remanded to these voluntary tutorials, but it's logged. There's articulation between the tutors, the teacher tutors, and the general ed teacher in algebra. And that makes, that solidifies the process, it makes it real, and it also is, you know, watchdog for the students. They know they're being looked at, they know, they know that it counts, and that the positive incentives to improve their grade become real. And at least what I found in the districts I've been in is, you talk about social, emotional learning, you, and I'm not necessarily in agreement with you, Jeff, that you need to separate the academic, well, no, let me paraphrase, that the academic is somewhat separated from the emotional. I think they can be very tied and rooted. So kids start to feel more self-actualized when they accomplish what they thought could, they did not understand particularly left-brain reasoning with algebra. It's something that they have felt some lack of success in, and when they start to get it, then you get that kind of catharsis and meaning that extends throughout their learning, not just with algebra. So I would advocate that you pursue less voluntary and more mandate. And, you know, kids will run the other way if you say, you know, you're sentenced to Algebra I, fifth period, block, they'll do everything they can to run the other way. But once they start experiencing that success, then the storyline changes a bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chani. And we've been talking, and Mr. Brant has been talking about as well, as we look at our bell schedule, some of my colleagues out there have had good success with tutorial periods that are embedded into the school day, so you have readier access to the kids, ours occurring after school. You know, historically here, those Block Five tutorials, you know, kids are on to practices and other things, and on to work, and on to getting home. So sometimes, yeah, we're not seeing all the right folks that we need to see in those tutorials. But to your other point, too, my youngest is 10. Over the summer, we got our letter home about her math placement, fifth-grade math placement. Her fifth grade math placement was fifth-grade math. And we're like, what does that mean? And she said, is that the accelerated math? And we said, we don't think so. And she said, good. You know, and so what are we teaching in that kind of placement, right? And what are we then trying to undo in a regional setting in ninth grade that is very difficult? And how does that play out across different demographics is a whole other conversation that we've had before as well. So articulation becomes one of the key things for us. And that expectation that every student who hasn't yet taken Algebra I is going to land here ready for a full and comprehensive Algebra I, that changes things for our middle schools in a way that we're going to have to work through with them, because right now, there are various levels of Algebra I and different tracks of math and all different sorts of things that lead to students being placed in ninth grade here. So we've got to grab hold of that through articulation and make some changes there, too. So significantly important stuff moving forward. Right now, though, it comes down to the individual students. We don't know what these data say. They're measuring something, or else everybody would have the same score, theoretically. So they're measuring something. We have to figure out what that is, and that's where we compare it to other data and figure out, well, what are the specific strengths and weaknesses that we need to be mindful of with each student? How do we mitigate those weaknesses with the strengths that they present? And racking that up against their aspirations on top of it? You know, what is it that they want to do with their, with their time here and after graduation? Jessica, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jess.
I will round out with a couple of quick items on organizational things, and then I'm all done with. Thanks for your patience here. Second reading under organizational items tonight, there's a second reading on a policy that we have to put in the books in order to comply with accessibility requirements and state law for our website. Our website vendor up to speed on all those requirements, and our website's in the capable hands of Mrs. Nancy Tucker back there. So I have no worries about this policy that you're looking at for second read tonight. Each year, we have to do the memorandum of agreement with the Raritan Township Police Department. That's on the agenda for approval tonight as well. I'm going out of order here, probably. This summarizes all the terms of the obligations under law that RTPT and our district have to one another. The state mandates the text, so we don't have any room really to adjust that, and I'm hearing that they're going to be changing that agreement. So next, in the spring, we might have to go back at it and do something new. Also, in organizational items tonight, our HIB, our HIB self-assessment appears there, and it needs your approval for us to submit it to the state. This is an exercise that we do annually as a way to focus our improvement efforts in handling cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying under the law. Happy to report that despite last year's surge in HIB cases that was felt across the entire state, we've achieved 75 out of 78 points on this self-assessment, well above the threshold that we need to reach. We lost points on training and planning, both of which suffered under the demands of that surge last year. I have to thank our principal, Mr. Brant, I have to thank Mr. Estrada, our HIB coordinator, and all of our HIB specialists, everyone else who works in this very complicated process for getting through successfully last year, and also- year, and also building a good, strong foundation for meeting all the changes in requirements this year. Let's see. Lastly, we have an item here to approve the Board of Education's determination of the district's and board governance goals for this school year. Those came out of our retreat. There's a copy in the agenda for you now. There's a copy on the stage as well of the, of the goals document. I'll leave any further discussion of those goals to you, Mrs. Hughes, when we get to that discussion portion of the motion to approve everything down there. And that is my report for tonight. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. So with that, we'll move into our first residence forum for any items on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to items on the agenda, please come up to the mic and sign your name and state your residency. Okay, seeing none, then we'll just jump into the motions on the organizational items. Can I have a motion, please, on the second read of Policy 1511?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the annual memorandum of agreement between education and law enforcement officials with Raritan Township Police Department for the 2022-2023 school year?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Can I have a motion in a second, please, to approve the school self-assessment for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights for the July 20, July 1, 2021 through June 20, 2022, June 30, 2022 school year?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And lastly, can I have a motion in a second to approve our district goals and our board governance goals, as Dr. Moore indicated, are in front of you. These goals, also, as Dr. Moore indicated, came out of discussions from our summer retreat. They were shared with all of you a few weeks back with opportunity for discussion. And then most recently, we added the two introductory statements for the goals, which were also shared with the board last week for discussion. Just to tie those goals, and these are the district goals, to the district's continuing reach for academic achievement. That is always the goal of the district, obviously, for opportunities for all of our students to reach their academic potential, and we just felt it was important to tie in that notion to these two district goals. So those goals are before you, and if I could have a motion in a second to approve those, please.
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
I just, I just want to point out that the actual language for this motion is on the addendum sheet rather than in the agenda itself.
Hearing no discussion. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. With that, we'll move into the committee reports. Mr. Richard, can we hear on student life and programs, please?
Student Life Committee met on October 12. We have several action items on the agenda tonight. The first one deals with tuition and transportation. Dr. Webb reviewed the tuition and transportation for a special ed student. This is a change in placement for the student due to the student's IEP. The second action item involves North Hunter and Voorhees Regional High School District students coming to Hunter and Central to take advantage of our ELL program. Dr. Moore reviewed the agreement with North Hunter and Voorhees to have an additional student from their district attend our school. 1.3 involves Somerset County Vo-Tech, or Vocational School. Dr. Moore reviewed the list of Hunter and Central students who attend Somerset County Vocational Technical School for various CTE programs. Early graduation. Dr. Moore provided information to the committee about the four students who have applied for early graduation. 1.5 involves abolished policies, second reading. This is a second reading on the abolished policies as follows. Policy 2415.01, academic standards. Academic assessments and accountability is being abolished because the legal requirements for academic accountability have been accounted for in the revised policy 2415. Policy 2432, school-sponsored publications is being abolished as it is addressed in the revised policy 5722. Policy 5465, early graduation is being abolished because the requirements for early graduation have been incorporated into policy 5460 on high school graduation. Policy 8464 on missing children is being abolished because the requirements have been adopted as part of policy 8462, reporting potentially missing or abused children. And we have a policy on first reading. Dr. Moore provided information about two policy revisions. Policy 9560, administration of school surveys has been rewritten to reflect the enactment of a new statute that allows school districts to administer an anonymous voluntary survey, assessment, analysis, or evaluation concerning student health only if prior written notification has been provided to parents. The new law and revisions, the policy 9560, include a process for notification of parents and an outline of the topics that may be asked. Dr. Moore shared that this policy would likely be raised in November, and that he was presenting it to the committee at this time for informational purposes. Policy 5512, harassment, intimidation, or bullying has been revised to align with the new 2022 NJ DOE model policy for prohibiting HIB. It includes several provisions that are consistent with Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, the Administrative Code, and case law to provide additional guidance to school districts in implementing the ABR. And there are a few key issues relative to the policy update. New NJ DOE-approved report forms, one for school personnel, one for families and caregivers, are required to be used to report allegations of HIB. A student intervention plan for a student who is an offender in three HIB incidents occurring within one school year may be required, may require the student and parent complete a class or training program to reduce HIB behavior. The HIB form includes a section for the superintendent in a district that uses a preliminary determination option to approve each preliminary determination decision not to complete an investigation. Therefore, the superintendent is required to approve all preliminary determinations made by the principal in consultation with the anti-bullying specialist not to complete an investigation. The principal in a district that uses a preliminary determination option must notify the parents of the alleged offender and victim with formal notice of the decision not to initiate an investigation. Such decision is appealable pursuant to Board of Ed policies and procedures governing student grievances, and thereafter to the commissioner. And the list of factors for determining consequences and remedial measures, and examples of consequences and remedial measures, have been removed and replaced with Appendix A, which are lists that were included with in the 2022 NJ DOE model policy, and many of the items are similar. 1.7, there's a new club, Computer and Linguistics Club. Mr. Brandt provided information to the committee about this proposed club. New club in investing, similarly. We're moving to approve an overnight field trip for the wrestling team to participate in the Beast of the East Wrestling Tournament in Newark, Delaware. And we're seeking to approve an overnight field trip for the National Cheerleading Championship in Orlando, Florida. Those are the items for agenda approval tonight. I also wanted to quick share with everyone some discussion items that are germane to us moving these ideas forward. We talked about early graduation discussion. Dr. Moore shared that the district was having difficulty bringing an end to this practice without concern for students who are already in the pipeline. He said that it would be necessary to move to a more direct communication to parents of ninth graders to announce the end of this process, starting with that class, but added that the district would continue to work with the state to determine if there's any possibility of continuing to offer early graduation without requiring the 30 college credits. AP course weighting was discussed, and we need to discuss this, obviously, in greater detail moving forward. But the committee discussed feedback on the cost of AP exams and the requirements to pay for and take the exam in order for a student to receive the credit weighting. Dr. Moore shared three possible solutions. Pay for the exams, which would cost the board about $150,000 bucks. Provide the weighting to all students regardless of whether or not they take the exam, or work toward the final removal of ranking and weighting of courses. In the second option, Dr. Moore explained that the district would need to revamp weighting across the entire program to accommodate dual enrollment and other compelling programs with appropriate weight, but that such a process would need to be phased in so as to avoid disrupting weightings and rankings for current students. He shared that philosophically, the third option may be the most beneficial and would be in keeping with the work of the most innovative schools. However, there would need to be a lot of study and communication and input from post-secondary institutions. And I wanted to point out, this is, I want to key point, we need to get information from our, the colleges to which our students go, about the impact of weighting on admissions and ranking on admissions. Dr. Moore proposed, moving forward on the second option, but beginning the study to determine feasibility of ultimately taking the third option. We also discussed cultural and foreign exchange trips. This is a continued discussion. We are grappling with issues involving students being placed in, in homes over which we have no control. The committee discussed the possibility of continuing programs through a hotel or hostel stay model if suitable coordinating partner would be available. We also discussed the NJSLA results, which Ms. Kangelosi-Hay provided tonight. We also talked about a home and school association. Mr. Brandt shared his work to date on the Homeschool Association, explaining that he had begun to work with a steering committee of parents to design the functioning of the group during the 2122 school year, and he noted that the first general meeting of the group was scheduled for the 13th of October. Attendees would be examining parent climate culture survey results to offer assertions and provide suggestions on next steps. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Richard. Do I have a motion in a second? Oh, did you move?
I didn't move anything because I have a ready discussion.
Yes, I have a question.
No, we do, we do the motion first. We do the motion in the second first.
Sorry.
That's fine.
So I move items 11 through 1.
I believe it's 10?
10.
10, correct. So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Dr. Charney?
Couple things. One, what are criteria for early graduation? I'm looking at the four students that applied. I would say, you know, two of them have a hardship case, and two of them, not so much. So what are the criteria?
The criteria for early graduation that Central has historically enacted are laid out on the website. There's a process that kids go through. They have to complete their required coursework, they have to score in, with passing scores on the required state assessments. And for many, many years, Central's honored early graduation requests if those things were true. The state requires now an additional piece, which is, quite frankly, I feel out of reach for, for a lot of kids who might be pursuing early graduation, which is, they have to have at least 30 credits toward a degree at a post-secondary institution through dual enrollment and other kinds of things. So we've gone from a situation where Central was quite open and flexible on this to a situation where now the state is, is demanding that we close the door almost entirely, because that's an almost impossible situation. We're going to continue to work with the state, and I'm not going to pull the rug out from anybody who already has this in their plan. So that was at the root of the conversations we had about beginning, beginning that with our current freshmen, so that there would be some time for them to be able to, to adjust.
I would argue that the, you know, 30 credits that have to be obtained, the students are pursuing that outside the auspices of the school. They're either going online or elsewhere to get those credits in some online environments. Can we really say those are equivalent to what we offer?
Well, I think a lot of dual enrollment opportunities, as we grow those, too. We see students accruing quite a few credits through dual enrollment opportunities as well. So it wouldn't entirely be through option two kinds of things or outside things that they're pursuing. But the end of the day, I mean, the state has laid down what the requirements are, and so those are our requirements. So if it's 30 college credits toward a degree at a post-secondary institution, then we can honor that, but if the student doesn't have that, then we can't honor early graduation moving forward for that student.
Dr. Moore? Just to clarify, it's 30 college credits in addition to all of our requirements for graduation?
Yes. Yes. Well, so they, they don't necessarily need to reach all of our credit requirements. They have to perform at an acceptable level on state-accepted exit tests, and they have to show these 30 college credits. And I would have to take a look at our policy to see the exact details about where specific course mastery comes into play. But it's a very, very high bar.
Do we require that they take, for example, our final exam in chemistry? Or do we accept whatever course they've taken, including online?
For the purposes of early graduation and 30 college credits, which is a requirement that we haven't had our students go through, they would be showing a transcript from a post-secondary institution with the grade. We wouldn't be giving them our own final exam.
Well, the only other comment I have on the AP testing. So the AP test, I feel it necessary to say this, is an organic part of the AP experience. So these tests, and both Rob and I have taught these tests for, or taught these courses for a couple centuries. So it, it's, it's a very valid, both criterion-based and construct-based assessment for the course, and is one of the best predictors for success in the freshman college year. And so I would hate to see that part of the course experience deleted. It's a part of the entire experience. When you go to college, you know, you generally are not exempt from taking the final exam. And so if our students get credit for a course, an AP, they should take the test.
See, I, I actually disagree with you there. I actually was happy to see that you're considering getting rid of that requirement for a couple of reasons. First of all, there's lots of reasons that a student might not take the AP exam. I remember several years ago, there was a student who came and talked about, you know, he was in lots of AP exams, he was a senior, he already knew he was going to the University of Pennsylvania, and there were certain courses he knew he would not get credit for. His family could not afford the exams, so he said, you know, there's no reason for my family to pay all this money for me to sit there and take a test that does me no good. I actually think... I actually think what the students are benefiting from is doing the challenging coursework of the AP exam. It's, it's a challenging course throughout the entire year. They take a final exam typically in the class. This is another exam on top of that. I'll give you another example of, of a time where it might not make sense for someone to take the exam. Someone is taking six, seven AP classes. They have so many AP, AP exams, all on, you know, sometimes two on a day. You know, it's not like college either, where you have reading days that you can sit and study for. Now they decide, "I'm going to focus on these four or five. I'm taking AP Lit. I already took AP Lang. My college will only give me credit for one English class. You know, there's no reason for me to take that exam." I mean, there's just so many, so many reasons a student might not take it. I can't see forcing someone to do that, to get the waiting from a class where they spent the entire year doing that challenging work.
Well, to counter your point, certainly, they have the choice of not taking it. They just would receive honors credit instead of AP credit. So the exam is, you know, the culmination of that course. And certainly, you know, some of our students take six or seven courses. And by the way, it's over a three-week period, so it's not, they don't have typically, you know, six, seven in a row. Those exams...
Yeah, I think it's, it might be over two weeks, and I can tell you that I've had, I had, my kids have had experience where they had final exams in the class during those same time periods. So they were not only taking all these AP exams, they were taking in-class exams, classes that weren't AP classes, they were taking exams. It's, it's a much more difficult experience than when you're in college, and you have just a couple of, of classes and a couple of exams. But beyond that, I, I just disagree with saying that you need to sit for that exam. You're, you're in this class, you're doing the same classwork. You're doing challenging coursework the entire year and taking difficult exams throughout the year, taking a final exam in the class. What does sitting for the AP exam have to do with if you, if you should get the same waiting? So someone who can afford to waste the money, who doesn't really care about taking the exam, they'll sign up for it, they'll basically, you know, write their name and put their head down for the two hours if it, if it means nothing to them, versus someone who says, "That money means a lot to me. I can't afford that, so if, you know, if this isn't going to benefit me, I'm not going to take it." They're not going to get the same waiting now.
So I just want to share one, so there's no action on the agenda on this tonight, and I don't, I don't say that to stall the discussion, because I think it's a really important discussion. But I do want to admire that the discussion is, is showing us that there is a lot to consider and talk about here, and that this is a tough thing to approach. I mean, it's, it's, it's difficult right now that we require this for the waiting and we don't pay for the exam, and that, that sort of sits in a very strange place. But getting out of that situation or doing something differently brings in all these considerations that we're going to have to weigh very carefully. A lot of this is in our regulation, but this is something that I would want to move forward and think about how our policy expresses these things, so that we have the full board process around any changes here. Because the way our regulations read, you know, we can, we can tweak those things and change this stuff very fundamentally, but I don't think that would be of service to our community or to you, given that there are, there are a lot of different thoughts and feelings about this. So I know, moving forward, we're going to have to gauge with the community. We're also, as Rob was, was sharing in his report, going to have to gauge with the implications that any of the post-secondary schools that our kids aspire to, you know, are going to, are going to ask of, of, of the transcript, you know? And can we, can we do anything without disrupting that? That, that's kind of a threshold question for...
Yeah, I, I will also just make a comment, since I know you're also maybe looking at completely getting rid of waiting and...
It's all on the table, Lori.
Yeah, that, that one I, I would have a real problem with.
Yeah, we'd have, we'd have a lot to prove there, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
And there was a pretty robust discussion in Student Life Committee about that. So that has definitely been in discussion in committee about concerns about possibly putting our traditional college-bound students at a disadvantage. So that is all, you know, up for discussion and has been discussed. Just one quick point on the financial aspect of the AP exams. There is a process, is there not, for someone to apply for financial aid to pay for the AP exams, correct?
Yeah, the hardship cases, right?
Okay.
Yeah, there is. I got to say, where, where that meets the need versus the burden that's on a family of a student who might be taking six, seven, eight, you know, wouldn't necessarily qualify for that assistance, but then has to make difficult decisions about, well, which exam do I take?
Right.
And I know there are lots of cases. Some kids, we're hearing anecdotally, will also move toward dual enrollment in some cases and not take the test because they're getting dual enrollment out of their AP course, you know? So there are lots of things going on here that we need to examine.
Any other questions or comments about the Student Life Report?
Just, just one other quick question with the HIB policy.
Yeah.
Once that's approved, how does that go out to the community? Like how, for, for parents and students, because it seems like maybe some of the procedures are changing a little bit, and I, I know we put the policies out there, but I don't think people really know it's there or look for it.
Well, and there are some changes in the HIB policy through the law that we need to communicate when it gets closer to its second reading. We're still just on first reading with it tonight, right? The, I have that right, right? That's just first reading, okay?
Yes.
So there is a whole new form that the state has mandated. We can't use our old forms any longer. We now have to use this standard form that the state has introduced, and I got to say, it's a little more difficult to use. It doesn't have all the information on it that we're used to, but we can't change it. The other thing is there are changes in the way that we track and archive HIBs that we're going to need to explain to the community. So one of the things that's in there that I need to point out is that according to the law now, we, we must include information about a HIB in the student's record. Traditionally, it was separate from the student's record. Now, when, when this policy comes into, into, you know, your, your second, your second reading, any HIB from that point will be included within the student record. Now, student disciplinary records are confidential anyway. They don't get shared with colleges. They don't get shared, but it changes things. It changes things for when we're talking to parents about what a HIB means. And I imagine, and perhaps rightly so, it, it might create more board-level conversation in, in parents wanting to have hearings and things like that. So these are things we're going to have to communicate to parents, which we will do when we get closer toward the passage of, of the, of the policy. It is law, so the changes are law, so we don't have discretion on the changes that, that we're, we're putting forward in the revised policy.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on Student Life? We have a motion and a second, so can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes, on 1.1 to 1.3. Obstaining on 1.4, yes, on 1.5 to 1.10.
6, 7, 8, 9?
He's abstaining on 4, but yes to everything else?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear that part. Thank you. Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Nichol, can we have an update on operations and transportation, please?
Yes, Operations and Transportation Committee met on Tuesday, October 4th. We discussed construction projects from this past summer, some of which are complete, some of which are ongoing. Several items on the agenda that we're looking to take action on. I'm going to highlight a few of them. We're looking to approve a contract for the Business Office HVAC project, which will come out of maintenance reserve. We're looking to, to approve the 22-23 annual maintenance budget to establish the 23-24 maximum maintenance reserve amount. Also approve the District Multi-Year Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. We need to authorize SSP Architects, the school's architect of record, to provide professional services for three new projects as shown on the agenda. And we look, we want to accept the following school bus evacuation drills, which were conducted on September 28th, 2022. With that, I'd like to move items I-1 through I-10.
Thank you, Mr. Nichol. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, Ms. Bloodfield, you're going to give the update?
Yep. I know the personnel agenda looks like it's pretty hefty, but actually, a lot of what's in here is just the approval of professional development instructors and attendees, all of which are being paid for through grant money. Other than that, most of this is typical of our personnel agenda. We have one appointment that we are rescinding. We have one leave of absence, a couple of contractual appointments. One of them, there is an addendum here. It's just the date that changed, is that correct? The effective date?
Yes. Number three, the date for...
Five.
Number five is changing. 1031 instead of 1025.
We have, for the, for the two second shift custodians, we have a couple of stipends. And then we are approving athletic event workers. We have some Schedule C advisors, including for the new clubs. We have a couple of Schedule D coaches. We have the monthly conferences, including the annual New Jersey School Boards Convention that's going on right now, our salary guide advancements. We have one six-block appointment that we are approving, and one revision. So with that, I will move personnel items 1 through 17 with the change that's on the addendum.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Racist and equity and diversity, Ms. O'Donnell's not here. Mr. Richard, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you have...
There's one action item that I can discuss.
Yeah, we have one action item. I know you weren't prepared. You were at the meeting, we weren't prepared to discuss. Do you just want to move the action item?
It's K-1. This is the authorizing the district to participate in the DOE. I'm on page 34.
So I'd like to move tonight, item K-1.
It's actually 2. Yeah, sorry.
K-2. Diversity project, move to authorize the district to participate in the New Jersey Department of Education Training, Coaching, and Technical Support Project for Workplace Diversity.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Moore, do you want to add anything about that?
Yeah, so we were approached by the Department of Ed and asked to apply for this project based on some of the work that we've done in diversity and equity and inclusion. The project here is the Department of Education is working with one of the regional education laboratories to provide professional development for district teams on ways to increase diversity in the workplace, different hiring and recruiting strategies, and also, though, ways to provide as friendly an atmosphere for diversity in your workplace to continue to support belonging among staff members from all different backgrounds and identities. So it's a series of workshops by Zoom over the course of the school year for a district team, and we're really looking forward to learning with the Regional Education Laboratory and some of our peers across the state to see if we can bring anything more to bear here to help us achieve some of the diversity goals that we have in our equity policy. No cost to the district, it's just time and effort from a, from a team of us, and we'll report regularly to you through the Red Committee as we go through that.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Thank you again, Mr. Richard. Sorry for putting you on the spot on that. Any comments or questions on that motion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nichol?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. With that, our committee reports are concluded. Additional business, I just have a couple of comments. Two huge thank yous from the board. The first to Nancy Tucker, sitting up back, who did unbelievable work getting our new BOE webpage up and running, lots of late nights and weekend work. We're grateful for all the work she put in. If you haven't looked at it yet, it's, it's phenomenal. We've been talking for a long time about just adding some more content to that page, explaining to the public, to our students, to staff, what, who we are, what we do, what is within our boundaries, what isn't within our boundaries. So it really came out well, and that's thanks to Mrs. Tucker. So we appreciate her for that. Mr. Brandt also, yep, feel free. He's here too, as well. Mr. Richard, in the Student Life Report, talked about the new Parent Homeschool Association, another project that's been in the works for a long time. I know we've been talking about it for years, and just want to give our thanks to Mr. Brandt for getting that up and running. We got phenomenal feedback from the first meeting from parents, so we're very grateful, Mr. Brandt, for all the time and effort you've put into that, so thank you. Last thing I want to mention is we have scheduled our ethics training for January 3rd. That is the date of our Board reorg meeting, so that is typically a short meeting. So right after that meeting, Board Counsel will be here to do our ethics training, so we have that on the calendar already, and we just want to make sure everybody's aware of it. Another thing we talked about at retreat, which we haven't quite nailed down the specifics of, is doing a mini-retreat, sort of mid-year, rather than waiting a whole nother year to catch up and just see where we're at with our board goals and if we have any new topics to discuss. So we are focusing on maybe late January, early February for that, and we'll talk some details as to whether we'll bring somebody back in to help us with that, but just, just keep your eyes and ears open for some more information about a January or February mini-retreat, probably just one day, just to sort of split the year in half and not wait another entire year to have retreat. That's all the additional business I have. Does anyone else on the board have any other business they'd like to bring to the table?
Just want to echo, the, the Board of Ed webpage looks really, really spiffy, so do take a look, and the district goals, everything's on there. So governance goals, district goals, and then all the contact information. Really came up nice. Nancy, thank you.
Okay, if there's no additional business, we'll move on to our second residence forum. This is for general comments. If you'd like to speak, you can come up to the mic, state your name and residence, and you will have five minutes per speaker. No one here to speak tonight?
Good evening. My name is Mike LaKeer. I'm a parent of a student at 100 Central, and I've been in the district now for two years. During my time here, I've been incredibly impressed with the work that's been done on diversity, equity, inclusion, on the student level, community level, involvement of students, community, teachers, administration, and so on. I've had a chance to be part of those initiatives, and I've, my family has as well, and I've been really grateful for that, and it means a lot for, for me and my family that this is happening here. I'm speaking tonight with... There was an incident at... I'm speaking tonight with, there was an incident at, at 100 and Central 10 days ago of, which several students were on the receiving end of racial harassment. And, and I'm well aware that things take time when something like this happens. I just really want the board to know that every day that goes by for the, for the kids who are on that receiving end, it feels like to them they are, that they're not being supported by the school. And it, it's painful for them, it's painful for the families. So I know like the care, I think it's the care policy, you know, the, right, is new, right? So maybe you don't have a whole lot of, you know, use cases that have been run through it. And it's just, it's a piece that's missing, right? The immediacy of support for the students who've been harassed. We need to find a way to provide that to them immediately, even if accountability for those who were the perpetrators can't be, for whatever reasons, given immediately. We, I really, we need to do a better job of, of taking care of, of those students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeKier. The board will connect with Dr. Moore on that topic, and somebody will be in touch if there's further information to share with you. Any other comments?
Mr. LeKier, I'm deeply sorry for you having to come to the mic tonight. I know you and I are connecting later this week to talk further, but thank you for coming up.
Okay, with that, we'll convene into executive session to discuss personnel and HIB matters for approximately an hour, would you say that's? Okay.
Is there action?
Will action be taken?
No action.
No action to be taken. Thank you.